Okay, good morning, everybody. It is December 15th, halfway through December 2020, 10:00 AM. And I hereby call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And would ask if anybody appears to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are, as I think everybody knows, we have the capacity of our public meeting room limited to 20 people right now. And the reason for that is for social distancing and to follow the governor's recommendation or proclamation. Actually, we're probably more likely 15 right now with the governor's proclamation. But that's why we are broadcasting the meeting, having the meeting via Zoom so that members of the public can attend and can discuss with us. I would entertain a motion here for adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Headens.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Markan.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. We'll now go to updates on COVID-19. Anything that isn't already on the agenda? Do your staff have any updates? Hearing none, supervisors. Supervisor Headens, have you looked at numbers for this?
I do. It looks like statewide, 1,338 new cases and 67 deaths statewide. Story County, 37 new cases and no additional deaths. We have 23, that's our total. 23, we're at, okay. Yeah, we had one additional yesterday.
So the kind of the summary of the trends that I've seen various places is that our new cases are going down, but deaths like new cases, new positives. So the death numbers still have statewide been pulling up.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments regarding COVID-19? If not, then public comment number one, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So I am, and I will open public comments now. And if anybody on the Zoom call has anything that they want to mention here, either use the raise hand function, or if you're on your phone, I think you use star nine to unmute. Does anybody have any comments here? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will post public comment. We will go to eight, discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. Are there any from staff? Seeing or hearing none, I'll go on to item nine, which is discussion and consideration request to have ongoing access to travel on Story County roads with a structure when the proper moving equipment application process is followed for Furno and sends house moving and raising. Well, I'll see Kevin Furno has asked for this, and he is here. Mr. Furno, I would ask you to come to the chair up here. And we do have, if you keep your comments brief, we have received your documentation. I just wanted to know if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, I guess I'm not very good at this stuff.
That's fine. You don't, just go ahead and tell us what's on your mind, sir.
Yeah, well, I don't know. You got this here where it says permit submitted but denied because of route selection, then changed because we are banned movers. Do you understand that?
So, I'm sorry, you got this. I actually don't have a document that says that. Is this kind of the formal rejection after you made the application this time? Okay, so we've got emails that have gone back and forth from various entities, but we didn't see the actual permit denial. So could you just tell me, what's the date of that permit denial? That you just read off of your?
What's that?
The document you just read off of.
Yeah, but that's just something, that's just something my wife made up for things that we were doing.
Oh, those are your notes? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. No wonder we wouldn't have seen them. Okay.
Yeah, but now, but now I do have right here, one of the first things after we submitted the permit for this, this house, it's a double wide trailer home at Flummerfeld Homes.
Okay. And when did you submit that?
Well, I'm sorry, is it okay? I got stuff.
Go for it, yeah. You can just tell me the month, you know, just kind of when roughly. I'm just interested in the timeframe of this last, latest one. Okay?
This is actually the permit application right here. And let me see here, as far as the date, where's it? 10/22/20.
Okay, so it was recent, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, very recent. This is a very recent, this part is very recent. This part of the situation.
Excellent, thank you.
That was the date you submitted.
So then I'll let you continue now that I'm clear about what you were looking at.
Now, is Darren here?
Darren, I think is on the phone.
He's probably on the phone.
Oh, okay. So he's just listening in then, or?
No, he, I think he's on Zoom, so I think he's.
He can, he can participate via Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah. So you made the application, and then you got denial.
Yeah, here's the, here's what we got right here. Do you mind if I read this?
No, that's fine.
It says the route reviewed to move the mobile home from Flummerfeld Homes S14 Marshall County to Marshall County has been denied, as there is not a safe route within the county's roadway system that could be used to ensure the safety of the traveling public during this move. Not sure what your timeframe is, but only Highway 30 would be your option. Well, they, they never want us to go down like Highway 30.
And who is Dave?
Well, I spoke to Dave Miller after I got this. I spoke to Dave Miller with the state that, that I deal with, with our state permits all the time. And Highway 30 is a state highway, so I would have to talk to him. And he says, oh, come on, Kevin. He says, we, we never want you to go down 30. We went over that, you know? Well, I said, this man, Darren says that he's mostly worried about this hilly stretch on S27. Well, Dave Miller from the state Iowa says, well, tell Darren that, you know, Highway 30 has got more than 10 times the traffic of this S14, you know? So he says, you know, we, there's, we don't want you to move down Highway 30.
Okay, so how many miles are you looking at moving? Isn't it pretty significant, like 20 some miles you're looking at moving?
Maybe overall, but actually, actually, the, the only two pavements that we're going to be on that he was concerned about is S14. And we're going to be on S14, I'm sure, less than two miles. And then this other, this one that really concerned him, this S27, we're only going to be on that like, and don't, I may be wrong with this a little bit, but I mean, I know it's less than five miles. And see, we've received, we've moved several homes this summer through Story County.
And have they been through the state, state contract?
What?
They were state contract homes?
Yeah, they were the ones for homes of Iowa, yes. And see, we're running them all the way from, from Maxwell on Highway 210 to all the way to the Des Moines River. And Highway 210, and I don't like going on different highways if you don't have to, but there's different times that gravel roads just, you know, you just can't get to where you need to go on the gravel roads. But just like Highway 210, all these permits that we've gotten this summer, Highway 210, there's not good shoulders whatsoever.
Right, but are those ones that the DOT have approved for you, the difference? Because I think you have ones that you're moving for personal individuals and some that the state have given approval, is that correct, through the DOT?
Yes, but see, we still, just like these homes we're moving for homes of Iowa through the state, have to get a Story County permit.
Right.
You know?
And is generally, how many miles in Story County are those generally?
Them ones that we moved there, oh, them had to been, like I say, I don't know the exact mileage, but we start, I don't even know where Story County line ends on 210. Didn't anyone tell me that?
Uh huh, Slater.
Huh?
Slater, the west side of Slater.
West side of Slater is where Story County ends. Okay.
So you're starting in Maxwell?
Yeah, right, right, right in the gravel.
I can answer that for you. It traveled one mile on Story County Road on S27, and it's got a T intersection on the north end, stop sign. It's very easily controlled, and it's a wide open one mile stretch that I had no concerns, especially because it was being escorted by the State Patrol, because it was.
Okay, Darren, can you help fill in a little bit? Because I know Lisa's already talked to you about this and Mr. Furno. But if I understand this correctly, Dave Miller is with the DOT, Iowa DOT, and he's the one who issues these permits on the state roads, which 210 is a state road also, correct?
Correct.
All right, so when you issued the Story County permit for the Story County section, that was only to cover the one mile on S27?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So that was the only time that you were, Mr. Furno, you were under the Story County permit? That one mile that you were on? And then Darren said T intersection accompanied by a State Patrol person, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. So Darren, if I could ask a follow-up question to clarify, it wasn't quite clear from some of the documentation between reading Mr. Furno's letter and your letter, your kind of information he sent. So I just want to clarify here. So even though Mr. Furno has been moving through the county, there's only a few times when you've issued the permits, and they've all been for these short little jaunts, when you felt all your safety issues were addressed, correct?
Well, it depends on the timeframe you're talking about. If we're going back to the date when the previous board decided to no longer allow Mr. Furno to haul in Story County, there's been a few hauls. There's been a few other ones, but they're all shorter hauls. And one of the, like I said, one of the first ones, Mr. Furno had already put it up on blocks and done a lot of work, so he more or less pressured me into making, allowing to do that haul. So that was frustrating, because he continues to claim he knows nothing about being banned. And I remind him every time he comes in this office, and he still claims he knows nothing about it. It just gets frustrating.
And thank you for that. But Mr. Furno, I'm coming back to you. Thank you for letting me ask these questions, okay? Is that, Mr. Furno, you, in your mind at least, prior to today, have you not understood the difference between us issuing a permit under those limited conditions and the permits that actually are being issued by the DOT?
Well, I understand that them are total different permits.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I do understand that.
Okay, super. Okay, thank you. I'm kind of done catching up.
Yeah, no, I.
Supervisor Headens, do you have some more?
I'll let Laura finish what he's going to say.
No, I do understand that. But see, from the beginning of this even, from the beginning of this, that we were banned. I mean, oh, let me see, and like I say, I'm not very good with this stuff. No, we, we have never, we have never received anything that said we were, you know, because see, and this happened like back in 2012. If you were banned from moving, how long would you be banned? I mean, there's people that, that lose their driver's license from drunk driving and stuff, and they, you know, or, or, you know, I've never had that situation or whatever, but I mean, I just don't understand this. It's saying we were banned back in 2012. Well, for one thing, we never, we never received anything that said anything about, hey, you know, someone's going to take you to court over, or you did such and such wrong, and there's a fine for that.
Did, do you understand this is totally at the discretion of the county engineer? With, yes, the board of supervisors' ability to override or support the county engineer's decision, but there is no, though, what you're looking for, some kind of fine or legal process? The reason is, my understanding is that you were, Darren came to the board because there were multiple instances of, he felt unprofessional behavior, lack of notification in projects that you'd already been told notification needed to be received, okay? So that there's not in the law a ban that you're looking for. It's the discretion every time a permit is applied for on an individual basis, and the discretion rests primarily with the county engineer, because the county engineer is concerned about the issues of safety, compliance, other, other property owners, because there were problems, I guess, with other property owners. So you had a long record that he was able to document, long incidents, sorry, records that has a criminal content to it, or a multiple instances that he was able to come before that board of supervisors and document where he felt that you were not complying with what was, had been made very clear to you. So do you understand that? And the law allows us to say the county engineer issues those. And then we can, we can decide if we want to support them, which is what the board did. And that, so there's no, that's why there's no length of time, there's no fine. We're just saying, we don't want, they were saying back then, we don't want you to do business in our county.
Well, I just, like I say, for, for never receiving anything from anyone.
Darren disputes that.
Yeah, you know, I listened to the, to the audio.
Okay.
Board meeting on there, you can hear the discussion from back in 2012, so you have that. Yeah, I mean, Darren can certainly speak to it. I don't want to speak for him, because he's provided information to us as well. And I think he has always done differentiated between solely requesting a permit from Story County, when you're going on Story County fully, those roads, versus if the DOT is approving something, and there's a short mileage range that you're going through in Story County, that has the escorts and all the safety measures that are, that are in place. I know from my discussions with Darren, that has been one of the concerns, is when you travel through the county, making sure there are safety measures in place, because it's, you know, getting the law enforcement out there, it's a coordinated effort to do that. It may not be a highly traveled road, but that day that you're moving may be very highly traveled, or other, it's whether it comes into play or other things can come into play.
I'd like Darren to explain. Mr. Furno has given his, his side or his, his version of what happened with his most recent permit. Darren, would you please just give us a summary of your decision there and, and what was behind the decision?
Sure. Like you say, that was late October that was submitted. It didn't have a move date on at that time. He was just getting a preliminary approval, because that's, like I said, since he was banned, I've let him move many times, because I felt comfortable with the moves. So I've been very lenient. This is the first time since he'd been banned that I've actually even said no. And that makes me more, more uncomfortable, because I'm putting myself more on the line since the board even agreed he should not haul in Story County. So if I allow him to, I'm putting myself out there even more now. So that came in late October. I looked at it. Like you said, it heads south on S14 and S27, so there's two pavements that would have to be completely shut down, because this thing is about 30 foot wide. Our road tops through both of those stretches are probably 26, 28 foot wide, so this covers the entire road and overhangs even more. Just in the first two to three miles, I counted probably 15 overhead utility lines that could be in conflict, I don't know for sure. There's definitely some big overhanging trees that are going to have to be addressed. And we've had issues with Mr. Furno in the past, not addressing those up front, and then just cutting them off when he gets there and upsetting landowners. Like as I mentioned, the traffic impacts to S27 and S14. We have one bridge on S27 that's probably going to need to be load rated, because that, it's a, doesn't carry as heavy loads as most of our other pavements. There is, then there's also really the question of, does this house really need to be moved? He originally called in and told my staff, it was a really old house, need to be moved, said family ties, and come to find out, it's only been there a year and a half. And then it's a brand new house, it could be easily sold where it sits, and it also has a garage with it, and he hasn't told me yet if that garage needs to be moved as well. But it could be easily sold where it sits. The necessity of the move is also a concern to me, to cause all this traffic impacts and additional cost. And I have, I have talked to both the owner of the house and the person that was supposed to get the house as well. I think Mr. Furno tried to tell them to call me and pressure me to get them to move it, but I explained my concerns, and they understood.
I'd like to jump in just on one thing you said here, Darren, okay? It has not been ever the history of prior boards of supervisors, to my knowledge, at least when I, the 20 years I covered, I covered them, or 10 plus. And I, today, am not comfortable of us interceding in whether someone can or cannot dispose or should or should not dispose of private property, okay? So I am uncomfortable that it's been, it's gone to that level about a personal opinion about whether somebody should move, sell or move your private property, and whether it should be sold or attached to the property. Just want to let you know about that one, okay? But I do hear all of the rest of your concerns. My question is, is there an alternate route that gets the move away from the two paved roads of concern and allows this to be routed on country roads?
On gravel?
Yeah, I have been asking that, on gravel. Okay, because I have, I feel in a way that the public has a vested interest in this, and you've given one side of the story. My concern is in general, whether it's Mr. Furno or somebody else, a different mover, is that mobile, mobile homes are affordable housing, and if they can't be moved from place to place in Story County to take advantage of the fact that someone may buy a used mobile home and want to move it to a different piece of land, all right, in Story County, I'm concerned about that from a housing standpoint.
We're not talking about a mobile home in this application.
Are we talking about a mobile home here?
I didn't think we were.
Well, it's, it's debatable. It's, it's a double wide, so it was really two put together, so that, Laura, I want to be very clear, I did not say that it could not be moved. I told those landowners, find another hauler or split it into two pieces. So I never once said, no, this absolutely cannot be moved. I said, this hauler has been banned, and the move is concerning enough for me, I do not want to allow this mover to do it. And I gave her names of other movers that could move it. So I, yeah, I want to be clear, I don't, I don't say, no, you cannot move your house, period. That's not my role.
All right, thank you, Darren, for making that clear. And also making it clear, because another question of mine was, do our residents in Story County have the option of availability of other people offering the same service? Okay, but you're saying, yes, they do. Okay, so it's just, so really, we are back to, it's Mr. Furno, you don't trust Mr. Furno to be able to handle this based on his past history and to comply with all of the rules, et cetera. You would trust some other movers who do the same business?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Darren, thanks.
Are there other questions?
I have one, but I just hate my head. Oh, Laura's clarification, no, it's okay, so I can't hear.
Was I hearing, Darren, that you had concerns about the route as well? And it's a combination of the concerns about the route and of Mr. Furno and his history with us?
Correct. And I did look for another route, and really, I could not find one, something this wide. And the bridges we have, it can, it can't go over many bridges on our gravel roads. That's why it's going over S27 Bridge, because it's on a paved road, and they can usually take heavier loads, and they're wider. But I could not find another route that would be better.
Darren, what, this one, if I'm incorrect, was, instead of being some of the other ones that have, that have been hauled for, like, there were maybe a mile or two miles, this was 20 some miles of country road majority, is that correct?
I believe it was 18 to 20 miles or something, correct?
County road. So Darren, I'd like to look at this from a little, from the perspective of, given your past experience with Mr. Furno, what kind of conditions would you put in place that would kind of soothe your mind on this move with him doing it? Like posting a bond? Requiring that he pay for a sheriff's deputy to accompany or a reserve, you know, the sheriff had, the department of reserve, to accompany and observe the entire move and have the authority to stop anything? Or maybe one of your crew and pay for that person's time? You know, other things? Those are the two things I'm thinking about. The concern of you being that you've had multiple experiences with Mr. Furno in the past, where you have believed items have been agreed upon, and they've not been, and you were able to present us an email showing that just last year with the DOT, there seemed to be misunderstanding about what it was you said. So are there those kind of conditions that could be put on, all at Mr. Furno's expense, and all that definitely set out the rules right in advance, so that you don't end up with a situation like you did with the contractor laying sand? And then basically just blowing off our road crews? Okay, but are there, are there any ability to, are you?
Yes, all those, all those things you mentioned are possible, and we have done those in the past. But then you just got to understand, there's also a level of trust we've got to have in the hauler, because once you start hauling this thing down the road that big, you don't just turn around, you're stuck, you got to keep going. If, if he hasn't done his due diligence, went out and got all the power lines set up to be moved, trees out of the way, you're essentially, this thing is stuck in a road, and it's not moving. So there's still a level of trust, and he's broken that so many times in the past. And then I get the brunt of the landowners calling me upset when he's cut trees and broken fences, and as I said, not putting salt on a gravel road, when he was told the morning of the haul did not do it, and he still did it anyway. I mean, it just, I don't know what to do at that point.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, I was just going to ask one question. So was there approval? I know it might not have been the route that you would like, but was there approval that you could take this on Highway 30?
This new move?
Right.
This latest? No, no, because it's, you know, there's so much more traffic on Highway 30. They always try to take us to the county highways, you know? And we've traveled nowhere.
Right, but did you apply to the state?
Oh, I talked to Dave Miller right away.
Yes, he's that.
He says, it don't make sense. They never, you know. That just, he says, it don't make sense. They never, you know.
Well, I know he said it doesn't make sense, but was it denied? Did you give a formal? You did a formal permit request that was denied, is my question, to the state, to go down Highway 30? Or did you just pick up, or did, yeah, or did you just talk with them, and that's what he said?
I spoke with Dave Miller, like I do with all the other moves, and, and instead of doing a bunch of work, the first thing to do is, you know, I call him all the time and say, hey, does this, does this sound good to you? And he lets me know one way or the other. No, there wasn't a permit application made. But see, we will still have to travel on S-14 to get to 30. But, but like I say, no, I did not, I did not apply for a permit, because he always lets me know ahead of time what, what we can, what we can do. And see, we've traveled county highways like this all the time. I mean, we've moved over six hundred miles this summer on county and state highways. And I just never have, I never have these problems.
But not than six hundred miles in Story County only? It's been other areas, so I want to make sure that that is clear. But majority of those were state projects where you have the escort involved, and it was a short part of Story County that you were.
And see, we got to escort every load, just because it's on a county highway. We aren't gonna just drive the house down the road. We've got to have an escort. We escort. If it's not a, a state highway, if it's just a, if it's a county highway, we can escort ourselves. But if it's a state highway, we have to have law enforcement or DOT.
Okay, here's that question, Darren, I've been trying to get in here to ask you, is, do you have any insight into DOT not allowing Highway 30 to be the route?
I do not.
You've not seen them deny before because they don't want things moved on Highway 30? That's not within your, that's not within your knowledge base?
Uh, no, I, I couldn't tell you on that, for sure.
Okay. Well, as, are there other questions?
Not from me.
I'm just gonna summarize that, that, you know, are county engineers responsible for safety when he issues permits? He's responsible for the condition of the roads and what happens to the roads because of their use. I'm not, as one supervisor, am at all inclined to put my lack of expertise in the place of our engineer's expertise. So I'm, I'm not, if, if our engineer wants to give Mr. Ferno some more information about under what conditions, he would be willing to issue a permit. But that's discretionary upon the engineer, as far as I'm concerned. Whether he wants to do that, I have no problem with that.
I agree with that. In addition, the way this is worded on the agenda says to have ongoing access to travel, and then does reference with the proper moving permit application, but what you're really asking, the way this is worded, is you want us to override Darren's ability to deny. And, and I would no way override his ability to deny. Each one is on a separate permit basis. He clearly has, as he said, put his neck out on the line already, okay, in allowing you short moves, because that board, when the board actually says, you're banned, okay, a board of supervisors, you're banned until the board lifts it, period. So, so Darren did, has already gone above and beyond and, and in allowing you to do some of those, right?
We've never, we've never been banned. I have never received anything that said we were banned.
Were you present, were you present?
Let's, I got all kinds of questions, yeah.
You interrupt me one more time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so there's, but, all right, I guess that's where I stand on this. You know, Lisa listened to the tape, I'm gonna ask her, did it clearly say the board backed a ban?
When I listen to the tape, because some of the audio gets a little quiet, so it's really kind of an area that's hard to hear and stuff. At that time, it was Rick Sanders and Wayne Clinton, and I believe it was Marty Chitty was on the board at that time, 2013.
No, that didn't Paul Toohey.
Paul Toohey, that's right, excuse me, yes, that's right. We're discussing and stuff with Darren, and Darren listed all of his concerns, and you can hear the board say that they, Darren stating how wanted to you know, not work with them because of the ongoing, going situations, and you can hear the board say that they support Darren and what he wants to do. Now, was the actual word banned said? I don't, I couldn't hear clearly enough to say, was the word banned in there. It may have been, but I, for me, I could not hear it clearly, but it may, may have been part of the area where Darren is talking about, and then banning, banning him and stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, so giving you the benefit there of, it may not have ever, that word may not have been in any motion, it sounds like, or in any affirmation there.
Yeah, I did hear, I, I did hear a specific motion on it, but you can hear Darren talking about and not wanting to, you know, not wanting to get you to work with this.
I'm gonna quote from an email of April 3rd, 2013, to Mr. Ferno. Kevin, I've been in the process of writing a letter about our recent experiences with your company, but I've not had time to finish it yet. What I was going to say is that I've discussed your two previous moves with Story County Board of Supervisors. We have determined that we do not feel it is in the public's best interest to approve any additional oversized permits with your company. And then it goes on to explain why, but to me, this is very clear that you were notified on April 3rd, 2013. It does not say the word banned. It says, we do not feel it's in the public's best interest to approve any additional oversized permits with your company, and refers to the board of supervisors, meaning that Supervisor Heddins listened to. So I, I think that you did receive some kind of notification of that. I understand you just said that you have several more questions. We have a full agenda today, and I did ask you to be brief when we started. I don't know if the, let me see if the supervisors have any additional questions or any.
No, I just would concur with the both of you. I don't have the expertise for roads to know what is the safety measures, the conditions of the roads. I would certainly need to defer to our county engineer and his staff to make that determination. I, I do believe that we need to be very cognizant of the safety of the citizens in our county, and also make sure that we are being very prudent in making sure that we are maintaining our roads so that they are being able to be utilized throughout the year and not shut down because of potential damage from oversized or overweighted loads.
Can I? Mr. Ferno, I'm gonna give you two more minutes, if you want.
I can't believe it. And lack of trust, I don't, I mean, I don't know what kind of notes you guys have, because even the deal of, like, putting salt on the roads, I had nothing to do with that. The customer, and that was back in 2013 also, and that was supposedly a, a big part of this, but I had nothing to do with that. Lee Lubka, the man that we were moving to home for, hired Vincent Trucking to do that, and I had nothing to do with it. But then even here, to start with even, in 2012, the moving permit has been issued, you required you notify our office so that we could be on site during your move, due to the size of the load. I was told that the move has already taken place, and we were not notified. Since we received no notification, I had to send my sign form out to the route to make sure that no signs were damaged during the move. A bill of this service is attached, and it will be and you will be receiving one by mail. We tried our best to accommodate to last minute, but sometimes additional requirements are necessary to protect facilities, prevent interruptions during. Any future permits requests will need to follow our requirements, and new permits will be issued until this bill is paid in full. Thank you. But like there, we, we paid the bill.
Did you notify them? It was really clear. You notified before you start. Did that happen?
Well, it really, it, it's not on the permit.
It's a yes or a no answer. Did you notify them?
No, I didn't.
Thank you.
No, I didn't.
I think I've given you the two minutes, and let me just explain something to you, why I'm, why I'm not, why we're not gonna take more time here. This is not a formal legal hearing. You approached one supervisor and asked if you could have a little bit of our time to discuss the issue. We've given that to you, we've gotten, you know, we've heard from our county engineer. We have done what you, you know, you asked for some time, we paid, you know, looked at this, paid attention, we've listened to you. I'm gonna ask the board now if they want to take any action. And then we'll conclude. Is there a motion regarding this item, or are you, are you still wanting more?
I'm gonna make a motion that we affirm the, it is part of the county engineer's job to issue these permits based upon his expertise, knowledge, and concerns about each individual application and permit application.
I'll second that.
Okay, for the discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Boy, I feel, I'm very disappointed.
We're disappointed in the record, I, sorry, I can't say we. I'm disappointed in the record hearing there, and Darren has twenty-seven years. Okay, so, Mr. Ferno, he's let you make some moves, people. So in this particular instance, it's his judgment that applies, and it will be on every individual.
I'm gonna move on.
Can I say something?
You said, you have half an hour, you have one more minute.
No, the lack of trust, because even like here, you guys, even one, the, one of the last things I got, we, we, we submitted a permit for the house, for the homes of Iowa, to go through. And we, we weren't getting the permit back. So then Darren emailed me, I have been told by my board that you plan to come to a board meeting to discuss the last moving permit that was denied. I need to know if that is still the case or not. If so, I will have to hold off on this permit as well until that situation is resolved. Is that any way that he should be handling this?
Our staff handles almost everything regardless.
Okay, and you've had your final minute, and we have taken action, so we did give you a good, we gave you the time that you requested, and we've made our decision, so thank you, Mr. Ferno.
But yes, Mr. Ferno, I am gonna say, that's how our staff, regardless of department, once, once, somebody wants us involved, it's a whole. Because who knows what we'll do with it?
Okay, let's, let's just continue discussion and move forward to item ten, which is agency reports.
Thank you.
And we have a report from emergency management.
We're gonna ask you to go ahead and step back to your table. Thank you.
Thank you. Emergency management, and is, we have a report. Keith Morgan, is there anything else that she would like to highlight in that, or, or for our edification?
Yes, there's just three main points. First off, is that I feel very fortunate that we were able to secure FEMA individual assistance to the tune of $320,000 for individuals here in Story County, and that came through a process of gathering damage assessment and being able to gather that data that's necessary to make the case for it. The second item is the, I appreciate the collaboration we're working with facilities, the installation of a cell booster that will greatly enhance our capabilities within the EOC to maintain connectivity, should there be differences, or if there should be damages to any one of the different communications networks that we have. The final thing is, we have done, Story County Emergency Management has done its after-action for the derecho, and we've used that to identify ways we can enhance our operations. I encourage the board of supervisors to take a little bit of time and to, across the Story County administration, look at the response to the derecho, and any ways that they might be able to enhance how they work with the citizens, both on a countywide basis, and also for those in an unincorporated area, to ensure that we optimize how we respond to widespread damages like that. So with that, I'll also open it up to any questions you might have about the report.
As you brought up the derecho, I just want to thank you for the assistance that you gave to the Planning and Development Department in opening up the debris site that we had south of Roland. I think a lot of the landowners in the unincorporated areas who lost numerous trees, people just lost their whole windbreak, and, and I think it was good that we were able to get, get a site, and also to get, get Homeland Security, and the Homeland Security contract to get that mulched rather than have to burn it. That was, that was, that was good for the landowners and better for the environment than having all that burnt. So I want to thank you for the help there.
And I, and I have to say that Planning and Development did some good prep work for that in the years leading up to the derecho, and that's the sort of stuff we have to be looking ahead and, and identifying those areas and starting to, to have the groundwork, so that when something does happen, we have the ability to adapt to it.
Thank you. Questions from the other supervisors or comments?
I have one, and it's on the last paragraph on the first page, and I just want to clarify a date. It says on January 7th, and then it talks about the STAR team coming out, search and rescue, and is that date right?
That is incorrect. It, it was December 7th. Excuse me on that one. Yep.
I just thought since it's a quarterly report, it wasn't, it got to be on a quarter. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good catch.
Yeah. And did you, from the, the derecho after action, have any specific recommendations to the county?
It was not specifically for the county, it was for our communities in general, and it's to strengthen our ability to have a communications, a command and control node within each jurisdiction, to be able to gather the information that we rely upon to gain situational awareness and to, to move it on up through. So again, I really appreciate that a lot of your staff is working within our emergency operations center. It would be much more for processes, especially given the unique structure of county government, to be able to go out and gather that information and, and be able to collate it and send it back to us.
Okay, let me try to talk some more about that. Thank you. Any other questions for Keith? So this has been certainly a unusual year for you, and I want to thank you and Melissa for all that you've done.
Thank you. To say that it's been challenging is, is an understatement.
For sure. Okay, we'll go on then to consideration of minutes. We have minutes before us of December 8th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So it's all moved, second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Next, okay, minutes are approved. Next, consideration of personnel actions. I would entertain a motion for approval of the personnel actions as listed.
So moved, second.
Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Next, we have consent agenda. Anything to be pulled?
Not for me, not for me.
Then I would entertain a motion for approval of the items listed on the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda items are approved. We have no public hearings listed. Additional items, we have one, discussion of consideration of temporarily extending benefits. provided by the Family First Corona Response Act to the end of February 2021 if Congress does not act prior to the expiration date.
Linda, can I make a suggestion? I'm seeing a couple of human services people up there, and I don't know if they're just hanging to listen to the whole meeting or not, but it's my understanding that Standard King wants to pull the asset allocation until next week.
I apologize.
So rather than make them listen to, listen to some of the internal business.
I should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting. The item four under additional items, discussion and consideration of Story County funding allocation of the asset process. Standard is pulling that. Again, I apologize. If anybody who was on the call waiting for that, it will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then the additional items. Item one, Alyssa Wigman.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So what you see in front of you, back in April, we had the FF-CRA that went into effect, and it did have, it was, it is set to expire on December 31st, 2020. There have been some discussions. There has been something, there was information put in the HEROES Act, which went through the House, passed the House, but the Senate has not acted on it yet. So there may be something that, that happens between now and December 31st. Unfortunately, we don't have that information. So what I'm asking the board to do is just to kind of extend those benefits. In the meantime, it's more of a, like a stopgap situation, just to continue those through the beginning of the year in the situation that, that Congress does not act on this. And we're not changing the benefits. We're not adding to the benefits. It would just be, I'm extending them. As we all know, the pandemic is not gone yet. And, and the piece behind this was really to keep, keep COVID out of the workplace, you know, provide employees with that leave so that they don't come to the workplace when they're sick or when they've been exposed to COVID. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. Again, we're watching it closely to see if something gets passed before the end of the year, but we're, we're drawing pretty close to December 31st.
So Alyssa, just on, you're just wanting this as a kind of a protection measure to extend it out in the event that they pass something that it's already kind of in place? Is this what you're looking at?
Yeah, instead of letting it expire and then having to make anything retro if they would happen to act on anything at the beginning of the year, just go ahead and get it, get it through the year, allow time for Congress to pass something. And then at that point, if there is anything that, that gets turned into more of a federal law, then we'll, then we'll go with that if there are any changes to it.
And if Congress does not act by February, end of February, we can look at this again to see if we would want to extend it further, depending on how the pandemic is going.
Yes, I, I think extending it a couple of months gives us time to really take a, take a hard look at it and see where we're at the end of, the end of February.
And I think that's a good point, because, you know, things are changing. The vaccine is starting to roll out, but the last thing I heard, I've heard very, it was some optimistic. Somebody thought that by the end of the second quarter of 2021, but I've also heard end of 2021 before, you know, we have, you know, most everybody who's going to get vaccinated, vaccinated. So we're going to be living with it a while, so let's be ready, is what it sounds like to me. Okay. Any other questions?
No, just, I'd like to follow up on a comment here about, thank you, Alyssa, for being proactive on this. This is one of these, well, it's an internal policy that directly weighs upon the staff and making sure that we're trying to help keep our staff healthy and cover them when they need to take the time off. And also, I'd like to point out, benefits to citizens, because we perform in the county, there are several essential functions that are performed here that nobody else does, as has been pointed out, like the treasurer's office and the recorder's office, et cetera. And so in doing this and allowing our employees to be able to stay home if they're exposed, et cetera, we keep the rest of the work staff safe and able to provide services every day. So thank you for that.
Anything else, Supervisor Haddens? No. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to temporarily extend the benefits provided by the Family First Corona Virus Response Act to the end of February 2021 if Congress does not take action prior to the expiration date.
So moved, second.
Haddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Carrie, thank you.
Yep, and just, go ahead. I was just going to note that we also had a memo with the union, so after this, since this was approved, I will get that updated and, and work with the union too, to allow them to utilize this, this leave. It expires December 31st also, so.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of revised temporary employment practices and policies in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Alyssa, again, and the attachment, are the changes the highlighted part?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Very minor changes. As we all are aware, the CDC has changed the quarantine guidance. So I did update our policy. We did have in there the 14-day quarantine if you were exposed. That has been changed to a 10-day quarantine or a seven-day quarantine with a negative test on the fifth day or after exposure. So IDPH did adopt that guidance. So I just wanted to update our current policy to reflect those changes. The other item that we had in there at the beginning, we did require employees to be free for, free for 72 hours. CDC and IDPH guidance is 24 hours, and that's, that's what we go with, and that's what the, any guidance you get from physicians, say at least 24 hours of, to be free for free before they can return to the workplace. So very minor revisions, but I did want to make sure we had everything accurate in our policy.
Any questions, Alyssa? Okay, entertain a motion for approval of the changes to the policy.
So moved, second.
Olson?
Aye.
Haddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Carrie. Next, we have the recorder, Stacy Harris, for discussion and consideration of a contract with COT Systems in to scan and host land records for $19,995, unbudgeted item.
Good morning, board. Can you hear me okay? Well, to give you a little bit of background, we met with our county executive from COT Systems when we were making preparation for the fiscal year '22 budget regarding our online index books and our historical records. We, this has kind of been in phases in, in conjunction with the auditor's office to do our online index book that offers online records to the general public by just clicking on a link. So when visiting with Don from COT Systems, he said, due to the pandemic with COVID, he's had 20 new, 21 new counties wanting to do this same type of project. So in talking with him, he said, you know, this coming spring, which we're still in fiscal year '21, he will have some time, so we may want to move up and do some additional records while they still have time, because there, of course, other counties are budgeting for FY '22. So my request to the board is to use, it's unbudgeted, but I do have, or the county has a separate records management fund that is, has over, a little over $77,000 that I do use every year to do these types of projects, and I would like to utilize that this current fiscal year.
Questions?
I don't have any questions, so I think it was quite clear. Thanks for the supporting documentation.
You bet.
Yeah. Questions either, and I think it's always good when you can make it, information more accessible to the public.
What happens to the records once you've scanned them? The, all the, all the space that you have in your office with all those record books?
We, we still keep the record books, because we want to make sure that if people actually want to physically touch the records, that they're still here, but you know, as far as having another for disaster preparedness, to having it online and obviously to make it more accessible to people that want to not come into the office. They don't feel safe to come in the office. So, so yeah, we still keep the actual physical books.
I'm just, and the reason I ask is I've just become aware of how much space we have various places in the county, that we've got old records. And good heavens, they're not as much, you know, I've seen places where half, half of the, half of the square footage is old records, and I think, how long do we keep, how long do we have to keep those? Do we keep it because it's easier than doing other things? We're going to have a space needs study coming up pretty soon. So I'm just thinking about that. Is there off-site storage? If we need more office space, say in your office, and I don't know if you ever will, but would off-site storage be an option that would be cheaper than building new office space for people? And I'm just asking that question in general.
That's a good question, and, and you know, and now in this day and age, everything's online and everything is scanned. So we don't actually physically have hard books that we're producing anymore in our office, and a lot of the counties, oh, I think most of the counties don't even use the bound, the bound books anymore. So I think, recorders-wise, I think that we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, well, we might have more conversations about that, because I think that's an issue we're going to have to grapple with in the county.
Right.
Is, when you run out of space, why are you running out of space? And are we doing things that, are we using expensive office space to destroy things that people don't really use? So, okay. And the Records Management Fund, $77,000, that's not just for your office, is it? Does that cover other offices in town?
Actually, it doesn't. It's, it's just for the recorders. It actually is in a code section. It's 331.604 that is designated, so a dollar. So when we record a document, $1 of that recording fee goes into this Records Management Fund. So in years past, I've tried to budget around $14,000, because $14,000 usually comes in, in revenue every year. So I try to just spend that $14,000 to keep that replenished. But with the balance of $77,000, you know, it's, the code is very clear on what we can use that Records Management Fund to restore records and to make them accessible to the public. So, so it's very clear as far as what those funds can be used for.
Thank you, Fran. Other questions? I would entertain a motion for approval of the contract with COT Systems to scan and host land records for $19,995, an unbudgeted item.
So moved, second. Do you need to add that it would be utilized out of the Records Management Fund?
Aye. I second that.
Okay. They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Haddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved.
Thank you, board.
I'm worried about it. The order wrong, oh my gosh. Thank you, Stacy. We appreciate it. Next item is pulled. We'll go to discussion and direction regarding county support from Ames City Assessor position. As I think we all know, the city assessor Greg Lynch is retiring, and there was a conference board meeting on, whoa, December 8th. And Supervisor Haddens was appointed to be on the examining board.
Many assessors board.
The examining board. You're on many assessors, but you were appointed to be representative on the examining board, which is to, I'm sure we see the process, I don't think, final appointment on a new city assessor. We did bring up in our discussion that Story County is one of the few counties that maintains both a city, well, Ames, the city of Ames maintains a city assessor as well as Story County, having a county assessor in most counties, I think over 90 now. All of, it was done by the county assessor. The city council, I think, later voted, my understanding is, to update a study they did in 2005 about feasibility or the wisdom of maintaining goals, why to have, why the interest in maintaining it. And, yeah, so they're going to be doing a study, which they said they're not going to finalize until February, because January is involved with budget hearings.
I don't know if they were going to not finalize, I thought they were going to start until about February.
Okay.
And they didn't want to slow the process.
So you're, you're continuing on with the examining board process, but they are going to look at this. We had some discussions with staff, I think several of us, since then, and we, we had some questions about if the city decides to maintain its own assessor. There are some things that the county has done traditionally, but not necessarily because they're in statute. We do payroll, we do claims, our auditor's office does. It has been discussed before about perhaps the city taking over those responsibilities. Workers' comp is also there. Because it is seen as a city function, it's in City Hall, and it's the city's decision to continue that. So I would just suggest that this might be a good time for us to bring up those issues. And wonder if we might want to direct staff to provide us, the auditor's office in particular, to provide us with a document updating the situation that we could share with the city and could be part of that. Because that could be looked at then as part of this updated study.
So are you looking at staff having a conversation with the city with taking those roles over or as just part of their, their, their study review? Because I don't know how long their study is going to take. And so I'm just wondering, are you wanting those discussions earlier or only in conjunction with the study?
I, I think what I was envisioning was that we asked the auditor's office for a document to present to the board of supervisors and their recommendation, and then we could forward that to the city and ask that they take that into account as they update 2005 study.
Would it be maybe more helpful to substitute the word "report" for "document"? You're asking for a report from, yeah. Because I almost, my first reaction was document, like a formal, do we have a signed 2080 or something? Yeah, so, so yeah, but I think it's a great idea. I would think now, get them started now, that because, as I understand it, after the examining board meets, there's only so many more, so many days where you have, before you have to put a list of the eligible candidates and then so many more days out for a recommendation. And then that would, would take you through there into February or whatever in February. They're not even looking at doing their study update until February.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, so if we can make these available to them right away, I think it clearly lets them know they're also budgeted, right? I mean, you know, if, we've kind of made a little bit of suggestive noise at that meeting last week, that geez, would you like to take these over? You know, if you want to claim them, okay, and have them, then maybe you should pay for them. Yeah, right? And so that would be helpful as they do their budget discussions.
So it would be a report, asking the auditor's office to submit a report to the supervisors regarding the county's support for the Ames City Assessor position and their recommendations on how to move forward on those if the city decides to retain a separate auditor, assessor. Somebody care to make that motion?
I think it's my turn. I make that motion.
I would second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Haddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you. Now, next, we have discussion and consideration of installation of full courtroom conference system at the Justice Center. Jovi Brogdon. Morning, Jovi.
Morning, Jovi.
Morning, board.
What are we doing at Justice Center?
Well, I was approached a few weeks ago by Scott Hand. He's the district court administrator. And Raphael Montag, he's the district clerk for the clerk of courts office for Boone Green and Story County. Basically, my understanding, I was hoping for, they would provide me with, it's not technically an item for me. I'm putting it on your guys' agenda on behalf of the judicial system. Judicial system receives some KERS grant dollars, so the project is of no cost to Story County. So the project is of no cost to Story County. I was hoping that, that was more clear in the documentation that they provided. But as you can see, it doesn't clearly state that, but it is fully funded by grant dollars by the judicial system. So it's of no cost to the Story County taxpayers. And it is very similar in nature to a project they did about two years ago in courtroom two C at the Justice Center, but it was more audio based. And this is incorporating some video equipment along with updating their current audio equipment in the courtroom. It is judicial equipment. And it's a lot to do with COVID-nineteen and jury trials and evidence presentation. They got everybody spread out. They're using, we're going to use in large monitors on carts that they can position in the courtroom so that everybody can clearly see the evidence without having to handling it. So I've met with Raphael Montag and this installation company about three weeks ago went over their overall plan. And they're not looking at altering any of the building. It's just had, a lot of it's just pulling out old equipment and replacing it with new modern equipment. The cabling is already there. They will update the cable as needed. Some of it, it's going to be exposed, similar in nature to what we see here. But they are using ADA approved covers that will go across the floor so that there's no trip hazard. There's plenty of outlets available. Because Justice Center is a modern facility, so it's got floor receptacles, wall receptacles. So as they move the carts around, there's plenty of opportunities to plug them in. I don't foresee any need, because one of the questions they ask is, would the county assist with any electrical needs? As far as power outlets, if necessary. And I don't foresee there being any need for us to install any additional outlets. And then they may at a later time approach us about permanently mounting these monitors that'll be on carts in the beginning. But they're not sure of proper location for the monitors. That's why they're going to put them on the carts. And we kind of went over the logical places that if you're going to mount a monitor, and I don't see it being anything other than mounting a bracket on the wall. So my recommendation is, is that I don't see it being any burden on the Story County for them to do this project. So I give a thumbs up.
My only question has a little bit to do with timing and it's more the court's problem than our problem. Okay. But it's, since they're not doing jury trials again.
Yep.
All right. But so from a installation, just in case there'd be a problem, or so you can kind of keep track and help them out? Jovi, is there, is the timing fine for you?
Yes, the timing's good for us. Their big thing was is they had to have the equipment purchased before the end of the year. So, and I do believe they, they're doing this in Isoon County as well. I'm not sure if there, there's other counties they're doing it in. But yeah, they don't have a definite install date yet, but they just wanted to make sure that they're good to purchase the equipment. So, and then, yeah, I'll make sure this, you know, I'm sure that they're going to want to get going on since they're not using the courtroom all that much right now.
With the deadline for the use of someone that carries money being December thirtieth. Yeah, I, there's a lot of stuff all of a sudden that's getting, submitting invoice, submitting invoice, so it's going to check.
Yep.
Okay. Well, any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the installation of full courtroom conferencing system at the Justice Center.
I second.
Further discussion? If none, Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jovi. Appreciate it. Department reports, we have an IT quarter report that's been submitted. And Barb Steinbach, are you on the line? Are you on the call?
Yes, I am on the line. Can you hear me, Board?
I hear you. What would you like to highlight or add to the report?
Well, I think one thing that we've had a lot of questions about and that has affected everyone is our spam filter replacement. We've had, we were having some issues with our, our current product in that it wasn't catching things timely. And so we did switch vendors and we now have a new product that's very highly rated. However, it's kind of a learning curve for people. This is the way we did it when Light Edge used to manage our spam filter, where we had the messages from the postmaster and we went in to see what was actually junk and what was not. Sometimes we get calls from people saying, hey, you know, I didn't get this email. I swear it was sent to me. It's not in my mailbox. This will eliminate that issue because it's a self-service. You can go in and see what was classified as junk and release it. And then from then on, that vendor will be allowed to send emails directly to your inbox and it won't be flagged by our new spam filter. And people, we've, we've mentioned this to several people. Once you register your device, you won't get these things that tell you you need to re-register. Once you, it's only a one-time thing. So I know a lot of people are saying, how come I get this every day? Once you register your computer, you won't get that anymore. You'll be able just to go into the folder and check to see what your junk is. And if you don't like it, delete it. If you do want to keep it, move it to your inbox. So it's, it'll give the user a lot more control over the mail that comes in. And then if they want to flag something as junk, it will go, actually go to their junk mail as well.
Barb, I have two questions related to the operations of this. The first one is if I want to receive, continue to receive emails from that particular email address, do I release it or do I permit it?
You permit it. If you release it, you'll just release that message. If you permit it, you will permit the vendor, the sender.
Okay. Yay. I was right on that one. Okay. The next one is I was contacted by one of the boards. I sit upon that they tried to send an agenda package to me and it was totally rejected. It kept on, they kept on getting, it returned. I never did get any notice from our new provider that to release anything. Okay? So I had to send it to my home mail so that I could get it, since I needed to, you know, get the information for the meeting. But is there still a possibility that some group emails are going to get just bounced back rather than put in the postmaster function?
There, there's three possibilities there, Loris. It could have been, number one, the size of the attachment. It could have been the sender itself, if that person had been flagged as junk accidentally in the past. Or it could have been because it was sent to a lot of different people, it automatically fit the parameters considering it junk. But you said you never did get it. And, and then the fourth thing, it could have been something on the sender's end too that we don't know. Do you know what format that file was? Because we do not allow zip files to be sent. They are notorious for containing viruses.
The, okay.
So a lot of different options there as to why you didn't receive it.
I think that's good. And for other people who are listening to this, we may not have known. So that is interesting because I do receive, and I think we all do on some of the boards' commissions that we sit on, we receive zip when we go to download your zip files. So what do we do about that? Or, and we could, because of time, that maybe is something that you could send out in an email to everybody or department heads and EOs later. Just let us know what to do if we suspect something went to the junk or is, may have come in zip files. How do we pursue the next steps?
Okay. Sure.
Great learning email. Thanks. Anything else, Barb?
No, but I just learned that I should be hitting permit instead of release. I was kind of playing around with it, you know? And a couple of them, I just, I released to see that one.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to highlight, Loris?
Oh, you're asking me? I'm sorry.
Was there, yeah, any final words or?
You know, I, I just wanted to say a little bit more about the UPS project because this was very time-intensive and labor-intensive and we ran into a lot of snags. These are the units that run servers in three of our buildings. We had planned to replace all three. The old units were seventeen, eighteen years old. And it turns out there was difficulty in scheduling with people. And also with the price, the price was much more than what we had been quoted eighteen months ago when we budgeted this. So we were only able to do two out of the three. They also involve some electrical upgrades, which there was a seven thousand dollar transformer that was, we were told that we would have to pay for. And I kind of pushed back on that a little bit because the electrical company did do two walkthroughs and they didn't catch that. So they finally did agree they would absorb that cost. So we were only able to do two of the three. I did budget to do the Justice Center next year in August timeframe. So that'll give dispatch a little more time to prepare and to find a place for their staff because they will not have power during this changeover. But also what it did too, this did involve the nine-one-one network and it allowed us to test our disaster recovery system. And that was, it had a few bugs as well because we'd never tested it before. But we did get that resolved and it's working. And so I think it was, even though it was kind of troublesome and a lot of things we didn't expect, it was a good learning experience. And, you know, if this had been a real disaster, we would have been really struggling to get everybody back online. So I'm kind of glad those things happened. I always said, there's no mistakes, there's just learning experiences. So I think we're really prepared now when we do the one over at the sheriff's office next summer.
A good way to look at it. No mistakes, just learning experiences.
And that's, that's all I have, Barb, Board.
Thank you. Okay, we will go on then to other reports, nothing listed. Upcoming agenda items, we will have the asset agenda item then next week. Any other things for next agendas?
I am not, the Board of Health is going to meet this Thursday evening. Mainly because, or due to the, kind of the messaging campaign. And they're requesting the Board of Health to approve the release of their peers' dollars. I don't know if it definitely did then come before the board of supervisors as well. No. Okay, I wasn't sure.
We delegated that. So I was thinking, ask them to.
So unless there's any other conversation, I haven't seen the agenda yet, was just notified this morning that they're going to have one. There could be something that may need to come up to the Board of Supervisors. Not anticipating anything, but just because of their meeting that they're having Thursday.
Okay. Anything, Supervisor Olson?
Cannot think of it right now.
Okay. And I'm not thinking of anything else at the moment either. So we'll go on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments, do the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So I will open public forum number two. And if there's anybody who has comments on items not on the agenda, this is your time to make them to us. And either if you're on Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine to unmute your phone. Seeing none, now we'll close the public forum number two. We will go on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Olson, do you want to start?
Sure. Tonight is the SIRHA board meeting. I'll be reminding them that I'll be sending a letter of resignation. Okay? The appointment process for that is normally that it goes through April. So, but other people have quit and so that you guys can appoint a new person and you'll have to send a, an email, I believe it was last time, along with a copy of the agenda, the organizational minutes. Okay? And I think that's how they did that last time. The hunger collaboration meets this week. And I just want to make note, I had already forwarded to you, I believe, the email that Annika Mondell from United Way had sent out listing the needs in the county right now. I had had some further communications with Carrie McPartland with the Salvation Army relating to the possibility of Polonians being able to try and launch some food drive with quick turnaround time. That, that's tough. It's this time of the year. Okay? So I'm going to try and make some more phone calls today to see if that can be done. But I just want to send out a reminder to everybody that we've got two, a couple of food pantries in the county who are in need of food, period. A couple more in the county who are short on breakfast items that they would, if you're going to donate cereal, oatmeal, you know, that type of, of thing, it's now good for them. And we actually have one or two, and one of them I can think of right off the bat is Huxley. And I know some of our employees live in Huxley too. They're looking for personal products. The food donations are great, but people still need shampoo and they need, you know, deodorant. So anyway, if you and your family are looking for a quick project and just want to go ahead and donate ten dollars worth of items or ten dollars, you know, this might be a nice little thing for you to do at Christmas time. It's, it's, the food pantries had more use in the month of November than they've had for the rest of the year. I mean, it's, it's been the highest volume. Okay? And it's just, it's starting to show that this is what's happened because of COVID in the county. So with that, thank you then. I assume we have the jurisdictional meeting on Thursday night? Or we go back to every other week or those?
I think it would be this night. Is that right?
Yes.
Or is that next?
Because it was last Thursday too.
Oh, it might not be. It might not.
So anyway, I'll, I will try to zoom in there. And do we have a CCMT tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. And you'll be not there. So it'll be the two of us.
Yeah.
Okay. Super. I'll need to call in.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's it.
One question I have for you, when you talked about the hunger collaboration. So are they aware of the dollars that they could apply to through United Way?
Oh, yes. In fact, how the, what happened with the, the Thanksgiving, or it was the Christmas meals that Salvation Army is organizing, the United Way has already cut a check for those.
When is that done? Do you know?
The day after I sent my email to you guys. So I believe it was Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning, they got a check. They had to make that check stretch as far as possible, because there were three hundred and fifty families that asked for food. Okay, for meals and stuff. I did hear from Carrie related to how quickly the Polonians could pull together a food drive. Yes, she's going to hold off a few more days before she actually sends that money to see what could come up. We just can't coordinate anything to, we couldn't do it this last weekend. Maybe we can do it this weekend, but it's just, it's kind of tight. She did give money for that.
Yeah. I forgot your email. I, I did call Jean Cressy at United Way. She said they still had about fourteen to fifteen thousand on their United fund, you know? And I do, so yeah, anything people do donate, you know, helps keep the cash. But, but she said that most of the food pantries have requested money this year. All but one, I think, has requested. And she will probably contact the county if we get to, they get to the point that they really are looking at short on cash. Yeah, we looked at that. We just had that agreement. She'd give us a call. But, so I didn't know if the Salvation Army money came before or after that, but good.
No, yes.
They did have need.
And I think that's a good point about, something about that, you know, virtual food drive or collecting so much cash is that United Way has been able to give along some to meet that special need or to make a bulk purchase. That's one of the issues that some of the smaller food pantries roll down into is that they can't make a large enough purchase for the food bag truck to come up or come up often enough. So as they can, and stuff. So I think it's wonderful what United Way did with that.
So I have on my, it's on my calendar, the CCMT tomorrow. There's also the compensation board that meets tomorrow as well. Thursday, the CICS is meeting. And then the Board of Health looks like they'll probably be meeting about six-thirty Thursday evening. Friday, I have the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center is meeting. It's earlier because the next week is the holidays and they moved everything back a week. And then is there something, Loris, with the AEDC on Friday?
So I will let you know as soon as I get an email from it. Originally, when the AEDC put out its schedule, they always have a joint Christmas meeting or holiday meeting with the Ames Chamber of Commerce. So it's at four PM always. So it's at 4:00 PM always, et cetera, and that. So, but I've received nothing, and it wasn't mentioned at the AEDC exempt committee meeting. So I can check in with Amy Mulgren, because she would send those out, but maybe given that COVID, and they just last week, last Friday, had their big recognition via Zoom, all right, that maybe it's been canceled and I just missed that little message. But I'll, I'll check it out, just see if you can free up your four o'clock.
So, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, it's free right now, but I just wanted to make, make sure.
I know, and I don't, so I didn't even, I don't, yeah, I do have it on my schedule. Anyway, so I will let you know.
That's great, that's great. That's what I have on my schedule.
Okay, I'm going to be gone for the next few days, but do have a meeting on Friday. I was just notified this morning that there, there'd be some discussion about asset funding for this year. Mayor Halo wanted to talk to some of the agencies, and I'm able to, to be there for that. I think it's going to be Friday afternoon. I'm trying to get more information about specifically what that's about.
Then I would like to throw this information out to you, because I had been corresponding with HERDA. I questioned that they had increased the amount of their request from this year, based upon what I've seen on the report that we got. So also at the same time, the city council did something on Tuesday night that it basically gave instruction to the staff at this point, no formal vote or anything, but gave instruction to the city staff that they would not entertain, entertain the HERDA request to the city to go ahead and, and cover the Ames rides that we're covering this year. And so I got a call from Danielle Gier, the reporter at the, at the Tribune, and she said, did I have any comment on it based on the fact that the board, you know, was last year? And I said, yes. I said, I had not listened to that part of the meeting, but she kind of told me what they'd done. I read the report, the, from the staff. And the staff was talking about, first of all, making some more of the plants qualify for Dala Ride, but also started talking about the fact that CyRide also receives money that maybe could be used, and some of these plants should be shifted over to other ride options. What they're really talking about is that there are some people who are riding HERDA who don't qualify for the Dala Ride. They are just riding from point A to point B within the city of Ames, and that's probably a high percentage of those, of those rides that are in Ames for other reasons. And so I had a brief discussion with Danielle, I guess it was Thursday, maybe, or Friday. Anyway, explaining about the dollar match for match, that was never told to the city council in the staff report. It said that they were only drawing down to 80 rides a month. We remember that when they came and reported to us, it was actually pre-pandemic, 1,300 rides in Ames a month. But what was happening is that they had been using the old, they'd just been kind of spreading the money out based upon that money that can no longer be used for rides in the city. So that, that's how we ended up allocating the $65,000 more. But the city council doesn't know any of that. And that's, and, and that wasn't in this report from the staff. So anyway, so I gave my comments about that. My comment that I said overall was I would wish that the city council would see the same report, allow HERDA come, give the same report that we got from HERDA, because HERDA asked to go to the city council, and they were denying. They were run back through the asset process. And not everything, that might be, not everything fits in the asset process. And so anyway, when I then corresponded with the HERDA staff yesterday, just to ask about, in preparation for what I thought would be our discussion today, Brooke Ramsey let me know that Danielle had interviewed Brooke and Barb, and I forgot her last name all of a sudden. She's the new CyRide director, because as soon as this, after the city council meeting on last, on Tuesday, Barb McNeil, that's her name, Barb got on Wednesday morning, got on the phone to tell Brooke Ramsey what had happened. And then now Danielle interviewed him then, I guess, yesterday. So there will be an article out, but it's another thing about maybe this will come up with your discussion on Friday, is that, is that there are some agencies, I think, that do want access to the council to explain that it may not be as black and white as is shown on the form. So there, there's my part of letting you know with the HERDA situation.
Okay. I'll see what I can do.
Sure.
If, I was thinking I, that you would be on the AEDC then.
Well, if there is, if there is.
And here's what I'm, here's why I'm suggesting this. You're going on the HERDA board next year.
Oh, you guys think that's going to happen?
Well, we, we have already put together a proposal who goes to the board. So I'm wondering if.
So that's something you'll have to vote on?
We haven't voted on it yet, no.
But you two talked about it, between the two of you?
No, we don't have anything final, anything. There were just, what are, what are ideas that we would like to be on? So I have not, I just have a list of committees I would like to be on.
Okay. We need to have voting on January 4th, so I ask.
Yeah, but you can't talk about it in advance, why I'm not talking about anything. I am just saying that I myself put together a list of some committees I would like to be on.
And I, and as chair, I, and I also talked to the person who's going to be coming on.
You could do that.
I did that, and I put up, I, I made, I put something on the agenda for discussion. So yes, I misspoke when I said, you know, what I should have said was the supervisor hasn't expressed interest on being on the HERDA board.
Got it. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
And I don't know if somebody else has expressed interest. I'm just saying.
No, I just, it sounded like, I just wanted to clarify, especially since this is being reported for the public and everybody understands that it's a little.
I would like to serve on. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have nothing else to report then, and if there's nothing else then from the supervisors, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Yes, my turn, so.
Second.
Okay, Olson.
Aye.
Headen.
Aye.
Merkin. Aye. We're adjourned.